I'd like to call the Onslow County Board of Commissioners meeting from Wednesday, September 4th, 2024, to order at this time. And we will start with Assistant County Manager, Mr. Ben Warren, with the invocation. Following that will be the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Warren?
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this opportunity to come before you this morning to conduct the business of Onslow County. We pray for your blessings and favor over our teachers and students as they return to the classroom for the upcoming school year. And may all we do this day bring you honor and glory. And we ask you things in your name. Amen. Now, with deep respect and reverence for the faiths, beliefs, and traditions of those gathered here today, please join us in a moment of silence. Thank you.
Please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to recognize the elected officials that have joined us this morning. Smiga Jarman, our Register of Deeds is here with us this morning, as always. Glad to have her. And then gracing us again is Sheriff Chris Thomas. We're glad to have the sheriff with us as well. I don't think I've missed anyone else, but thank you all for being here. With that being said, we ask that all in attendance, please set your cell phones to silent or vibrate mode. The Board offers the public one opportunity to speak during the meeting. Comments should be limited to no more than five minutes and may be on any issue in which the Board has control. In accordance with the Board's adopted rules of procedures, commissioners shall reserve responses, if any, for the commissioner's comment period on the agenda. Our first item is adoption of the agenda. If we have a motion for that. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Those opposed? Hearing none. We have an agenda this morning. We'll move right to item number two for approval of the consent agenda items.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. So I believe that takes us right to item three. Mr. Smitherman for public comment.
Yes, sir. This is the chairman, we have learned citizens signed up, and that is Terry Newtz.
Oh, I got it. Great, welcome.
First, I'd like to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak. I'm here to discuss a problem I've had with the solid waste department, which is the planning and development department is responsible for. I submitted two letters to the county. The first one being in August 23, and which got no results whatsoever. Nobody even called me concerning it. When I called back, I was given some excuses of why nothing was done on one of the properties. I was told that the property was being foreclosed and that the heirs of the property didn't win nothing to do with it. Well, I did a little research, checked the register of deeds. I found out that there's no deed of trust on the property, just a warranty deed. So therefore, I don't think anybody can foreclose on the property. And as far as the lady saying she's not interested in it, somebody's interested in it because it's not on the delinquent tax list for five or six years since the individual died. The backyard, you can't even walk into, and there's pictures of the property that I gave to the county. And at this moment, I have six vacant mobile homes in the area I live in. They've been vacant for years. And being vacant, according to the county's definition, is no water or electric for 180 days. So I'd just like to see the county get cleaned up. In the package I gave you, I went from food line in front of the air station and just drove a circle. And I submitted other properties that were on Onslow Pines Road and on Highway 53. Most of them are junkyards, in my opinion, and they're not covered from the public's And the second thing I want to talk to you about is retaining ponds. I've lived on the same street since 1972, and we never had a problem with flooding until probably the last 10, 12 years. There's a picture, the last picture I submitted to you was the flooding that took place the last time it rained. And I don't understand why commercial properties need a retaining pond. We've had two commercial properties built in our area in the last couple of years, General Dollar's and Family Dollar. Both of them properties, probably less than an acre worth of property, and they both had to put in retainer ponds. Developers come, build 53 houses on Marlowe Hill Road, no retaining pond. All that water is draining down into Tank Creek. And Tank Creek just cannot hold any more water. We got developments on Onslow Pines Road that's been built. All that water is draining down into that creek. I went to the state. The state did come out and did repairs on James Street, but it does not work. It's just too much water at one time. And I think developers, if they want to build 53 houses, they need to put an area in there to retain the water. Because that water's got to go someplace. And I don't know, I've been told that they've had flooding problems down on 17 where Tank Creek crosses between Marlowe Hill and Onslow Pines, but I really think that that should be a requirement for developers. And with that, that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Newtz. We appreciate you coming.
Thank you.
Mr. Smitherman?
That's the end of the public comment period, sir.
All right, we'll move right into presentations.
All right, Mr. Chairman, we do have one presentation this morning, and I will read the proclamation into the record. State of North Carolina, County of Onslow, Proclamation honoring Dr. Carl Cordoni. Whereas for over 40 years, Dr. Carl Cordoni has been a dedicated servant to the citizens of Onslow County, working tirelessly to contribute his time, resources, and talents. And whereas after proudly serving in the United States Air Force, Dr. Carl Cordoni worked as a member of the IBM Launch Team for nine years at Cape Kennedy. After graduating from Duke University in 1981, Dr. Cordoni joined the Onslow Mental Health Center as Supervisor of Adult Services, where he would eventually become the Director of Mental Health Services. And whereas Dr. Cordoni was so well-respected for his commitment to the county, he was asked to conduct numerous seminars for the Department of Social Services, as well as local law enforcement agencies, and provided regular mental health evaluations in the county jail, both by request and court order, as well as within the women's shelter for ongoing service needs. And whereas he also dedicated his time to the Consolidated Health Service Advisory Committee since its inception, and has been an important member of the Community Child Protection Team and Child Futility Prevention Team, tirelessly working towards finding resources that can be utilized or created to minimize child fatalities. And whereas Dr. Carl Cordoni, through his strength, leadership, service, and imminent dedication to his community and the citizens of Onslow County, has earned the respect, admiration, and affection of the citizens he has so graciously served. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the Onslow County Board of Commissioners recognizes and commends the significant and admirable contributions made to our community by Dr. Carl Cordoni, and encourages all citizens to emulate the exemplary qualities displayed by Dr. Cordoni, presented this fourth day of September, 2024. And Dr. Cordoni will accept the proclamation, and the chairman has requested that Commissioner Scott present the proclamation.
Thank you, Mr. Warren. We also, Commissioner Scott wanted Commissioner Buchanan to join him as well in this presentation.
Chairman, if I could, if I could have the sheriff come up, please? And anybody that's on the advisory board at the Health Department, please come forward. Doctor, if you would come with us, please.
This is a temporary condition. I'm hoping for a next month.
Come on, Doc, right here. Ma'am, if you want to be a participant.
Got some help for you.
Come on, come on, we don't want them backed up there. It truly is a pleasure to be up here today with the doctor. For 40 years, plus years, because I did not know that he served in the United States Air Force. For that service, I thank you, sir. Forty years, he has given his life to Onslow County. He has many hats. He has served the citizens of this county and made many decisions, and has probably seen more tragedies than he can count. At night, I know his heart. This man is dedicated. And for that, I ask Commissioner Buchanan to come up for the respect of the Board, because he's the senior person that's sitting in this audience with us today and serves the county. So I'm asking him to say a few words that he can go into some detail exactly about the doc.
Here goes.
His dedication to the community for the 20 years I've been a county commissioner has been so great and admirable for him, what he has done for the Health Department, DSS, law enforcement. He's been involved with every aspect of Onslow County for over these 20 years that I've known him, and he's been doing it for 40. And I want to appreciate what he has done for this community. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your participation, what you've done. Thank you for this.
In the summer of 1981, if anybody had told me I would spend 40 years and more in community mental health and service, I'd have laughed. My ambition was to spend a couple of years with the community and then go out and make big bucks in private practice. But it got to me. It really got to me. The part that was hardest was dealing with the kids, the dead, and the abused. It was not a huge portion of my time that I spent there, but it was a huge portion of the emotional investment I made in this community. Over 40 years of dead and dying babies, abused children, kids who died with drugs. I could take no more, and I'm sorry that I couldn't because they needed the service, but there was just too much. And I did not regret one day. And I'm happy to have served. Thank you very much.
Commissioner Buchanan, Dr. Cordoni. We had a meeting just for you today, Dr. Cordoni, as the presentation. So it was all dedicated to your service to this community today because that's our only item on the agenda. So we appreciate you being able to be here and what you've done for Onslow County. Mr. Smitherman, manager's comments now?
Yes, sir. I'd like to thank the Board for a really productive workshop today. We met two hours prior to this meeting and got our first real briefing on the strategic plan. We have another meeting. So yesterday evening, we had a community-focused group forum in Sneed's Ferry. We have another one in a few hours or within the hour at Hammock's Beach State Park, and then another one here this evening. And I just want to remind our citizens that there are still plenty of opportunities to participate, even if just online. There's plenty of resource out there for you to participate with a survey and the community idea wall, and opportunities for you to tell us what you think about Onslow County and where you want it to go. So again, thank you for the productive workshop today. This afternoon, we have a meeting among all concerned about our November National Election Day. Our Elections Board is leading a session around security of our elections to make sure that everyone at Onslow County Government is doing their part to ensure that Election Day goes smoothly. And last week, I was able to attend the portrait unveiling for Ernie Wright, who is a distinguished citizen and former attorney and former advocate for our youth. And it was a really touching ceremony, and was super glad to participate and see Mr. Wright's portrait where it's going to be displayed right next to the judge in our superior courtroom. Finally, I did want to bring to the public's attention the good work that Sheriff Thomas and others through our Health Department are doing toward substance abuse recovery in our jail. We had our first session of female inmates that are working on recovery. And, you know, our job is to make sure we don't have a revolving door and that people get resources. Usually, they're in jail because they had a failure of resources to help them with a problem that they may have been having. And if that problem is substance abuse, of which there are several dozen in our jail that are actively part of our medically assisted treatment program, if they're there in our jail, it's an opportunity for us to provide the services to make sure they don't come back because of that same issue. And Sheriff Thomas is pioneering a really terrific grant program, a federal grant that he's administering, and has a whole setup there that's very impressive to see. And I know that the inmates are really happy to hear that we're talking about them and that we're providing these resources. So I encourage you all, if you ever have the opportunity, hook up with Sheriff Thomas and meet these ladies and soon-to-be men that will be going through this program, because I think it has the potential for a real game changer in our community. That's all I have today, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and close with the Commissioner's comments. Anybody want to go first?
I will.
All right. Commissioner Bennett?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, I don't want to repeat what the manager said, but I appreciate what we're doing with our strategic plan, and encourage anybody who hasn't made comments and gone on our website to give us their input to do that. I want you to know that I read every one of your comments yesterday. I appreciate them, and we definitely will be taking everything into consideration and doing the best we can to make this the best county in the state of North Carolina. Also wanted to send my thanks to Mayor Jeff Wenzel from Holly Ridge, who recently resigned because of his business needs. And he's been a great friend for Onslow County. He's been here to keep us updated in what's happening in Holly Ridge, and I hope that whoever they replace him with will be a good friend to Onslow County as well. I attended Ernie Wright's portrait unveiling, and I heard a lot about his lawyer abilities, but I knew Ernie Wright in a civilian capacity as a community leader, someone who was out to help people who were disadvantaged, and was very interested in serving his community and helping as many people as he possibly could. And I'm glad that we were able to honor him with a portrait in the courthouse. Also wanted to mention Major Jim Capers, who had a birthday a week ago, belated birthday. He was the first African-American Force Recon Officer in the United States Marine Corps. He's got so many medals that I can't count them all, and I want to wish him a belated happy birthday. And finally, I want to congratulate my son and my daughter-in-law for the birth of my sixth grandchild, Jude Bennett. And I'll be going to visit them just as soon as this meeting is over. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett. Mr. Scott?
Well, I'm still moved about the doc. Doc, thank you for your service. I know you say you're still going to be with us, and you are welcome at any of the meetings. You're an asset, sir. God bless you and your family, and thanks again. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott. Mr. Bryce?
For those of you who've sent messages or phone calls concerning EMS calls to athletic contests, I've heard those, and I'm sure all the other board members have as well, and they are concerned about our response times at those times. As a former coach, I understand the angst that people feel whenever you've got a kid laying on the field, and it seems like a lifetime before a response gets there. But actually, our response times are really good, and we're trying to work on getting those down as well. And we made inquiries on those, and so I want to let you know that we are in tune with that and responding to it. So thank you and have a good afternoon.
Thank you, Mr. Bryce. Commissioner Carpenter?
Yes. Wanted to say thank you to the citizen Terry Newtz for coming today and expressing your concerns over those two different topics. And I hope, before you leave today, that you'll have the ability to talk to somebody in person that might be able to address those better than I certainly can. We do appreciate and hear what you're saying. Since the last meeting, I was very fortunate to attend the Monford Point Marines Memorial on a very early, beautiful morning God blessed us with. It was cool and nice, but I was so touched by the amount of men. I did not understand the history behind that memorial until that day, and was just very touched by these men who fought to fight for America. It was amazing, and I really commend the people that are part of that volunteer group that tried to locate these men and bring honor to them because it's a great historical thing for us to be able to feature here in Onslow County. Also attended the Public Safety Awards Luncheon and was very excited to be able to celebrate a couple of Onslow County employees who do exceptional work and were recognized for that as such within community groups that were present that day. And again, I'll be the third person to talk about our workshop. These workshops are so phenomenal and so meaty with good information. The strategic plan, I just have to say hats off to Angie and the team for getting really creative with ways to reach out to our community citizens. And as the manager said, there's still opportunities for you to express your opinions if you're a citizen watching who has not done that survey yet. I'm thrilled to know that really the participation rate is so much higher than anything that has been going on locally here, as well as in comparison with other counties that are bigger than us. So good for you, Onslow County citizens, really. The other thing is very interesting, and I want to say probably Commissioner Bennett, you were instrumental in bringing this to our attention, but the topic about Trap, Neuter, and Release, the program for the community-based solutions for managing community cats. I've had a few different individuals who are friends of mine who I know have always been concerned about the fact that we've been a high-kill shelter here, and the numbers are definitely on the decline. And in North Carolina, we are no longer one of the top three highest-killing, or excuse me, we're even lower than 18, sorry. We've dropped out of the top fifth of the counties in the state that have a high-kill rate, and it's going down by the day. It's a very great concept, which I think is going to address the community cat overpopulation problem that we have, and I'm looking forward to seeing the numbers go down even more. So just one of the highlights from the things that we learn when we sit in our workshops and get educated on what's going on with the county. So thank you all very much, anyone with Onslow County Animal Control and staff that bring all of that possible to us today. Thank you. Have a great day.
Thank you, Commissioner Carpenter. Commissioner Buchanan?
Ain't much left to say, is there? No, thank you for the workshop we had today, David, you and the staff. It's really good to have these workshops. We get a lot done. Doc, thank you for your service. I only knew you for about 20 years, but I know you've done 40-some years with us, and we appreciate what you do for this community, and it means a lot. I want to reach out to our Director of Public Safety, Chief Mike Yanero. He's in the hospital in Duke, and we understand it's not good, so my prayers go out to him and his family. Besides that, thank everybody for being here.
Thank you, Commissioner Buchanan. Vice Chairman?
Doc, congratulations. You're well-deserved. I think you know my wife. She sat on the board with you for some time. But from one Air Force veteran to another, very proud of you and thank you for your service because you did choose the right branch of service. So I just want everybody to know that. David, the workshop was good, informative, especially about animal control. We had some healthy discussion in reference to some of the policies that I won't discuss here, but hopefully we're moving forward. And the workshop's really good because it kind of itemizes everything out, and we talk about certain things, and we move on, we get to consensus, and I think they're very productive. So thank you and your staff. I want to thank Veronica Pinion. She works with the Child Support Council. She invited me to be her guest speaker at the North Carolina Child Support Council last week in New Bern on August 29. It was well-attended. There must have been at least 300 to 500 people in the audience. I was supposed to be their motivational speaker. I don't know how well I did. I try to motivate them in my own way, but a good bunch of people. They're dedicated to their job, so I just wanted to give a shout out to Veronica for inviting me. It was an honor to be there to talk to them. And I'm going to go ahead and mention this because I've already caught enough ribbing today and in the last couple of days at work and here. I'm still a Seminoles fan. Stop that. Our season, we're 0-2, and I'm sure you're loving it there, Ben, but I just want to say, go Knolls. The scene's not over yet, and we'll see what happens. Hopefully, they'll change their garbage quarterback that we have right now. But thank you for attending, and all I can say is go Knolls.
Thank you, Vice Chairman.
Don't even start.
I didn't have the, I wasn't able to go to the unveiling of the portrait for Mr. Ernie Wright, but that was well-deserved, and I'm glad that we were able to have people there as a part of that to recognize his commitment and what he did in Onslow County and served there. Commissioner Carpenter mentioned Monford Point and the Marines of Monford Point and the recognition of those families for their family member that had original Monford Point members, which is a tremendous story. That's history right here in Onslow County. The strategic planning work and the survey, excellent job that's going on there. Mr. Kevin Riepele and I were able to go on the radio last Friday morning and discuss that. They've done an outstanding job, that team and Angie, of getting this information out and getting people responding. It's good to hear the things that we are doing well, but the most important things to hear are those things that people feel like we need to do better at, and those are the responses that we will go to work the hardest on, is maintain what we're successful with and improve what we are, we need to improve on. And I appreciate the leadership that Mr. Smitherman and he's developing the leadership development within the county with our directors, because the success of this county is going to be based on the leadership and where it goes from there. So the effort and time put in there is going to be a benefit to all employees in Onslow County and the citizens of Onslow County. It's always great to acknowledge the public safety officers and personnel and the awards at that luncheon. Those are the unsung heroes too often, and it's always great to recognize the efforts and the things that they do. So we appreciate their efforts, and we appreciate everybody being here. And I'm just not sure how much inspiration or motivation I can get from a guy who's 0-2 with his Knolls. But hey, we're Tar Heel fans. We expect what we expect in college football, so we're not good. So with that being said, we need a motion to adjourn.
A move.
Motion and a second. We are adjourned.